The Hatfield Planning Board will conduct a public hearing on Wednesday, July 9, 2014, beginning at 7:30 PM in the Memorial Town Hall, 59 Main Street, Hatfield, Massachusetts. The purpose of the hearing is to review the application of new singular wireless PCS LLC[24.08][24.08](AT&amp;T) on property owned by Michael Bartlett and Susan Bartlett located at North Hatfield Road, Hatfield, Massachusetts, assessors map 211 lot 43, currently zoned rural residential. The proposed project is to install a wireless communications facility to consist of a 120-foot monopole tower in accordance with Section 3.0 Use Regulations, subsection 4.3 Wireless Communication Facilities set forth by the zoning bylaws of the town of Hatfield. The rules of order or the way we're going to conduct this public hearing is the petitioner will present their proposal, and once they've reached a point where they feel like they're complete, anyone who wishes to speak for the proposal, if you raise your hand, you'll be recognized by the chair, please state your name and address for the record so we can get that into the minutes of the meeting. When that seems like that's done, anyone who wishes to speak against the proposal will be recognized by the chair, and again, state your name and address for the record. Once that's complete, the petitioner will be allowed a time for rebuttal. And then, once that's complete, the planning board may then choose to close the public hearing. Once we vote to close the public hearing, the comments from the floor, the floor is closed unless the planning board, when we're discussing it amongst ourselves, if we have a question, or if the planning board has a question, we may ask either the petitioner or anyone in the audience, then they can answer our question. But the discussion from the floor is closed, other than that. And then, the planning board may then vote on the issuance of a site plan approval or the special permit. That's the rules of order. At this point in time, because my immediate family has an interest in this proposal, I'm going to step down from the planning board and turn the chairmanship over to Paul Dostal.
For those folks that have just entered, make sure that you sign an attendance sheet that's going around.
It's right here.
Pass that. Just so we have your name for the poll record.
People that just came in.
Folks that just came in, you want to sign the attendance sheet, please? There's four chairs, there's a couple chairs up in the front here.
There's chairs upstairs.
Some in the back.
Excuse me?
You hear the petitioner?
Yes.
You can present your proposal.
So, do you want me to begin?
Sure, go ahead. Yeah, open the meeting.
My name's Michael Dolan. I'm from the law firm of Brown Rudnick, here on behalf of the applicant AT&amp;T Mobility Corp. My client has FCC licenses, copies of which are enclosed with our application to operate a wireless telecommunications network throughout various markets across the country, including Massachusetts. As part of the build-out of its network, AT&amp;T Mobility is seeking to install a wireless antenna facility on the property off North Hatfield Road. As demonstrated in the radio frequency engineers affidavit and coverage maps included with our application, the proposed facility will help fill a significant gap in coverage in AT&amp;T's network. Specifically, the proposed facility will help provide coverage within the town of Hatfield as well as along I-91, US-5, and the surrounding neighborhoods. The facility will consist of a 120-foot multi-carrier cellular communication monopole-style tower within a 50-by-50 chain-linked fenced-in equipment compound, as well as a related 12-foot gravel access road from the street to the facility. AT&amp;T will be installing 12 panel antennas and related equipment on the monopole at 116-foot centerline height, and the antennas will be connected to ground equipment in a 12-by-6 equipment shelter where cabling will connect between the antennas through the interior of the monopole down into the equipment shelter. As for why this site, after having identified the hole in its network coverage area and the need for a new antenna facility, as is customary practice, my client first looked for existing structures upon which it could locate its antennas. There were no such structures within the search area needed to locate a facility to fill that coverage gap. From there, and we've demonstrated this effort and the exercise we go through in our land use planning efforts in our site acquisition statement, which is included with our application. So, once there were no existing structures that were feasible, my client then had to resort to looking to a raw land facility, property, upon which it could locate its, a telecommunications structure. From a land use planning perspective, my clients tried to identify a large tract of land, preferably with some surrounding undeveloped lots or commercial uses in the area. In the instant case, we're pleased that we have identified a site for location, the proposed monopole, that substantially meets those objectives. Our subject parcel is 11.2 acres and is currently used as a potato farm. The uses in this vicinity are industrial, commercial, agricultural, and residential. The lot is surrounded to the north and west by open space, as well as the Western Massachusetts Food Bank facility and the CNS Wholesale Grocers Warehouse and Trucking Facility. The owner of our property also owns two contiguous lots to the north of the subject lot, which are undeveloped. The closest residential structure is nearly 400 feet away, and all other residential structures are close to 700 feet away from the tower. AT&amp;T's proposed facility will be 725 feet from North Hatfield Road and will be partially screened by an existing tree canopy of trees that average somewhere between 55 and 65 feet. My client has also designed the site so that it would meet all applicable setback requirements mandated under the town zoning bylaw. In this case, AT&amp;T is proposing a slender gray monopole design to minimize potential visual impacts, and the monopole will not be lit. The facility will be able to accommodate the antennas of three other wireless communications companies, and that would thereby reduce the need for additional telecommunications structures in the town of Hatfield. According to the Hatfield zoning bylaw, a telecommunications facility monopole on this property is permitted by special permit with site plan approval, which is what we have applied for here tonight. The facility will not be a threat to public health, safety, and welfare. In fact, the facility will aid in public safety by providing and improving wireless communication services to the residents, businesses, commuters, and emergency personnel utilizing wireless communications in the immediate vicinity and the surrounding roads. The facility is also unmanned and would only require regular maintenance visits of one, on average, one to two trips per month. And at this time, what I wanted to do is just, if you could look at the plans here and just review what we're proposing here. You guys have the plans.
This is the same document.
So, for the folks here, this is the subject lot. It's the irregular kind of L-shaped lot. You'll access the site from off of North Hatfield Road, a little bit better and closer drawing here, shows that off North Hatfield Road, we're going to create a 12-foot-wide gravel access road that would take us up to the back corner of the lot where the 50-by-50 compound area would be, as well as our proposed, within there, our equipment shelter and the proposed monopole. Along this route, we're going to install one utility pole right on the corner, near the edge of the street, and then from there, to minimize any visual impact, along that route, we're going to put in underground utilities. I also wanted to show some radio frequency coverage maps, which demonstrate, these are also included in your materials, just to give everyone a feel for what we're looking at here. This is a current coverage map of, radio frequency coverage map of this area in Hatfield. The proposed facility is here. There's North Hatfield Road, I-91 there, 5 coming down here. So, we've got, we've got coverage here. We have a big gap here, and if we're able to put up our facility here, in this coverage map here, the purple color shows the new and additional coverage we would gain from this facility. As you can see, it does address that significant gap we have right now. This will also fill in tandem with what we are proposing and has already been approved in Hadley. There's another facility there we just got approved for, and that one is in the process of being constructed. So, as you can see from these--
Can you show us those, because the maps we have are just black and white?
Okay, sure. So, this is, this is the current coverage.
Mm-hmm.
And you can see the proposed facility here. Green is where we have coverage, white is where we don't. That's North Hatfield Road, I-91. And then, with this facility, we'll get that much coverage right in that area and along here. And then, the additional facility I was mentioning in Hadley, that one here will be coming on air within the next six months. So, that gives you an idea of the future coverage that is in the works now, but as you can see here, this is what would fill our gap in coverage.
Okay. So, is that, that's the new one, this S?
Yes.
So, is that the ambers, or is that--
And these are existing facilities. This is in Hadley.
Okay.
So, at this time, I'll take any questions you may have.
Well, actually, if it's time for questions, pull a map out again.
Sure. This one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, if you have the site that you have identified, then--
512.
Yeah, flip it over, flip the map over. That covers that. That same coverage, could that same coverage be handled in a different location? Well, in the sort of, you know, built-up corridor of I-91 and US-5.
We have not identified any locations in this area where we could build a facility that would cover this area as well as this.
This is--
The search ring center is right here. So, the further we get away from, the further we get over here, we're going to lose this area here.
Yeah, it goes all the way up to, well, in the sun--
We get some residual splash from the site there, but the core areas here, as you can see, there may be higher elevation areas where some things pop up from different sites, but this is the core.
This is, this particular area that you're asking for new coverage--
Yep.
--is a very low-density population area, and the traffic flow is going northbound and southbound. I'm asking, would it be, make more sense if this was transferred, say, do you have another map that shows Waitly and beyond for AT&amp;T? Because there's--
What?
What? It just doesn't, to me, doesn't make sense that, I don't know what you're gaining. That's my question.
Mike, do you want to add to the discussion about how we came into this site?
Sure. It's more of an R F question. What we, the way we identify sites, we're provided a particular target area by AT&amp;T engineering that are looking to fill coverage gaps, and their objective is to fill coverage gaps, not necessarily only on the highway. They're interested in expanding coverage, and from my perspective, it's an engineering assumption on where they need to fill those coverage gaps. Coverage like this is sparse coverage. It's not even reliable coverage that this is predicting on here. That's why this particular site actually does cover 91, as well as falling back into filling up the coverage in--
You know, I'm less concerned about necessarily covering 91, as I was just thinking about you started out your presentation by talking about looking at existing land uses and the area in which you were going to locate it. And while we do have residential areas along Route 5 and 91, we have a lot of commercial, industrial areas there, too, where a cell tower might be more compatible. And I guess I'm also wondering, since you noted that you're so close to the CNS warehouse site and Mass Food Bank, since they're so close that you noted them in your opening remarks, then why not on the CNS site?
We approached them, and there was no interest from them.
Why is that?
Okay, I don't, I don't, that wasn't a setup. I didn't know what, any conversations you may have had. It's just that there are, there are industrial--
Right. And let's be clear, though. We're not just covering this.
No, that's true, but if you're moving that--
So, if we come to here, we won't get most of this.
No, but if you go 700 or 1,000 feet here to the west, to the CNS site or to the Mass Food Bank site, you're not going to lose a ton.
We had extensive dialogue with the Mass Food Bank, and they were not interested as well.
It's a commitment of space and, you know, deviates from their core business.
Okay.
Does anyone have any questions?
Now, if the tower goes up, I mean, can other, will other cellular services be able to go on that, like the one at Brockway Smith, I think, like Verizon and great things like that?
Yeah, the thought would be that AT&amp;T would have the top slot on the tower, and that we've got space on the tower for three other communications carrier co-locators, as they're referred to, and they could put their antennas up at three different heights and similarly, to the extent they had the need, get additional coverage.
Again, on that map, I mean, Verizon, like, as an example, okay, I mean, they'd have the same coverage there.
I don't know what their coverage is.
I mean, because the cell service right now in the center of town is terrible.
Right.
I don't have AT&amp;T, but I'm just--
How many towers are there in Hatfield?
I don't, I don't--
I think there's one.
Yeah, so, I mean, we're, pursuant to our FCC license, we're obligated to provide the coverage to all the areas where we hold the license, including the areas we're proposing tonight.
Areas or area?
Area.
Do you have any, in your, in your, I didn't see when I looked through this earlier, is there anything in here that provides some sense of what the tower would look like from neighboring homes?
We do not.
Because you talked about screening and landscaping, but that's at the base.
Correct. We do not have any photo simulations included with, included with our materials, but if the board would request them, we'll provide those.
I'd--
To the extent the board--
See how the conversation goes tonight, but I think there might be something that would be important--
To the extent the board felt that a balloon float would be helpful to demonstrate the visual impact of the facility, we'd be amenable to scheduling that at a time when, and give notice to folks so everyone would have an idea of when that's going to happen. And from there--
Was there a preliminary put out there? Wasn't there a preliminary out there?
Wait.
We're going to follow that protocol, right?
Yeah, so, I'm sorry, you're, so you're, you would basically lift a balloon to the height of the--
Correct. And then, we could take photo simulations, exactly, we could create exact photo simulations from that balloon demonstration, and obviously, the residents could come and view that as well and see what kind of visual impact the facility might have from their respective properties.
You got a picture if you want to see it.
Still with this group?
Yeah, we haven't asked for the public thing yet.
Not the public yet.
Is there no discussion yet?
No.
Okay.
Anything else that the petitioner wants to add?
Just in summary, we've got, in this area, a significant gap in coverage. We, there are no existing structures upon which we can locate, and we believe that this site is equal to or better than any available sites to us.
Okay. Is there, is there an antenna on this existing one, MAL 05190 for AT&amp;T?
Yes.
So, will that go away?
No.
Okay.
Anywhere there's, on this map where there's--
That's this right here.
Yeah, these are where we have existing sites, and those won't go away.
All right. Nothing, like, your antenna from there does not get transferred to there?
No.
Okay. Anybody else that wants to speak for the proposal from the public? Ms. Bartlett.
My name is Susan Bartlett, and I live on 329 West Street. The town of Hatfield zoning bylaws, Section 5.3.7, subsection A, states that the planning board shall grant a special permit if the following criteria are met. And according to the second college edition of the American Heritage Dictionary, the word "shall" is defined as, quote, "a directive or a requirement or a command," unquote, such as students shall report weekly to their tutors. Therefore, the word "shall" directs or commands the planning board to grant the special permit if the criteria are met. The planning board may not arbitrarily deny the special permit if the criteria are met. They are compelled to vote to grant it. The criteria are met as follows. Number one, the requested use is designated in the Table of Use, Section 3.0, subsection 4.3 of the zoning bylaws in rural residential zone as allowed by the special permit with site plan approval from the planning board. Number two, the use is in compliance with all provisions and requirements of this bylaw and its general intent and purpose. Number three, the requested use is not detrimental. As a matter of fact, the use is desirable to the public convenience and welfare in that the wireless cellphone antenna will provide a means of communication to an area of town which has spotty, intermittent cellphone service or a very weak signal at best. Many people in this day and age prefer not to use the traditional hard-wired landline telephone service in their homes. They carry cell phones for convenience and therefore do not wish to have the additional expense that, of having a home landline-based telephone. With a low-quality signal, some folks do not have the choice of going wireless at home. Additionally, cell phones provide us with an alternate means of communication in an emergency situation. For example, the October 2012 snowstorm which hit Hatfield and the surrounding area when fallen trees and tree branches took down the power and telephone wires mounted on utility poles. This left most of the area without power and without a means to communicate. This lack of landline-based telephone service meant people were not able to call ambulance, police, or fire due to the lack of cellphone service. These cellular communications facilities have their own backup power generators, enabling our cell phones to get through to emergency services, or even to call another family member or friend to be sure that they are safe and sound. Number four, the use will not create traffic congestion or impair pedestrian safety because of the vehicular traffic will consist of only an occasional service technician's vehicle visiting to the site to service the equipment. Number five, the use will not overload any public utilities because the wireless facility does not use public water or sewer services. Number six, the proposed wireless facility is located in a rural zone adjacent to an industrial area, therefore, it will not impact the character of the district. Number seven, the required site plan has been submitted for approval. Number eight, the use will not affect surface or groundwater quality because of the small area of the site and the lack of paving and minimal hard surfaces which discharge surface water. Number nine, the proposed use will not generate sewage, refuse, or other waste based upon the use as only a wireless communication facility. In summation, these wireless communications facilities are a vital link between the citizens and emergency services in times of local natural disasters or emergency situations. The federal government has mandated wireless telephone providers to fill in the blank spots in their communication networks in order to provide everyone with a means of communication during an emergency. This cell tower, as shown by that map, provides a coverage for the blank spot. It meets the criteria, and therefore, the planning board shall grant a special permit.
Anybody else that wants to speak in favor of the project? Nobody else? Okay. So, we're going to, we're going to turn it over to those, anybody that wants to speak against the proposal. Please state your name. Remember, there's a lot of people here that look like they want to talk, so please stand, state your name and address, you know, your position for the record so that we have, can get it in the public record, please.
Mr. Chairman, may I approach with written documentation?
Sure.
My name is Attorney John McLaughlin. I've been retained by one of the direct abutters, the Rhino family. I have a written objection to the cell tower, the first cell tower. I will give you the written objection, I'll try to briefly go over it and summarize it as best I can.
So, John, do you have a copy of that?
Yes, I'm sorry. Is the owner here?
Yes, that's me. Thank you.
May I as well, please?
Yes, for sure.
Thank you.
As I said, my clients are direct abutters. They also believe that there are many other direct abutters who would be in agreement with them for the objections, for the reasonings and authorities set forth in this written document. And I advise anyone who does make such an objection and who agrees with the statements that I may make here tonight, to specifically state that and to adopt our arguments such that a written record can be kept of your adoption of the arguments set forth herein. I just want to point out that my brother counsel made a very good argument and presentation about how the plan meets with many of the provisions, but it's what's not being sought here tonight that I think is the most crucial element. One of the provisions to gain a special permit is mustified by the other regulations. The height for the rural residential zone maximum is 35 feet. They are seeking to put in a cell tower, commercial cell tower in a residential zone that's 120 feet high. I submit that they need a variance in order to do that. As far as I know, I haven't seen any application, I haven't seen any argument, I haven't seen any pretense that they meet the criterion for a variance. Without the variance-- Without the variance, what are we doing here tonight? The special permit without the variance seems like it would not be of any use. I do understand that the building inspector didn't state that they required a variance, and I also understand why there may have been a belief that they did not need a variance. Hatfield's bylaws state that you...the height restriction doesn't apply to ventilation shafts, towers, copulas. And the courts have said that where they talk about those type developments, including using the term "tower," they're talking about things that are sitting on top of buildings. Because your definition of what doesn't...which your height bylaw doesn't apply to, doesn't...it has the word "tower," but the courts have said they're talking about towers, ventilation shafts, and cornices that sit on top of the building, not a 120-foot tower in a residential zone that is only supposed to be 35 feet high. So I submit that without the variance, they haven't met an extremely crucial element of the special permit criteria, which is you have to be okay with all the other rules. The idea with the special permit is, yeah, of course, my brother counsel even pointed out how they meant the dimensional variance for the side yard and the front yard, but what about the height?
Can I just respond to that while we're there?
Yeah.
Literally, Section 4.2D of the bylaw says limitations on height of buildings and structures in the dimensional table shall not apply to chimneys, towers, ventilators, spires, antennas, and ornamental features. Towers is expressly limited...expressly referenced in that section, and we take the position that we do not need any height relief in this situation.
If I may, that...that exact language has already been addressed in the Town of Franklin versus...Building Inspector of the Town of Franklin versus Dispatch Communications of New England, Massachusetts Appellate Court, 2000. In that case, the cell tone...the cell tower applicant did the exact same argument.
But it was not the exact same language.
It was extremely similar.
It's not the exact same language.
Extremely similar. Down the towers, they bring all their power into Hatfield because they're over 35 feet.
Excuse me?
The towers, electricity all comes in. Towers that are over 35 feet high. That's what he said, nothing over 35.
No, I mean, a public utility has different rules than a cell tower company. Public utilities do have different rules than cellular towers.
Many courts deem us to be a public utility.
And most courts don't.
But many do. You know that, too.
If you knew that, you wouldn't even bother with an application if you thought you were a public utility. I advise you, take a look at the case I cited. The language is extremely similar.
Will you respond to that in writing after I...we disagree with that interpretation?
The case is extremely similar. I...please, I may...I may have brought a copy of the case.
Is that a decision from the highest court in Massachusetts?
No, it is not.
Okay.
You're at the floor here. You've been charging your own...
Obviously, the applicant disagrees with me on the interpretation of this particular statute. I mean, the wise...maybe they could have asked for the variance and shown that they were entitled to it under law, but instead they tried to get through without even asking for the variance. And I understand that the building inspector didn't say they needed it, so I can understand that. Now, I also want you to think about the federal law as it applies to the state law. What the federal law basically says is that you're not supposed to try to put a prohibition on their cellular activities. You're not supposed to take actions that wouldn't allow them to utilize cellphone service in Hatfield. It doesn't mean that your bylaws aren't in effect. It doesn't mean that your statutes aren't in effect. It doesn't mean that the cell tower people can come here and just get anything at any height they want, anyplace. But it is true that there's a federal statute that says you can't act in such a way as to put a prohibition. And to that effect, they presented evidence that says that there's a gap, and they've also presented some statements regarding other facilities. Now, they're supposed to show that they've made a reasonable effort to look at other feasible options. I cite to the cases in my...in my letter regarding that. And they talk about at least two other commercial-type sites, not residential, that could do the technological signal carriage that they want. They say that, oh, they're not interested. I think when we talk about the word feasibility, which isn't defined in your bylaws or the statute, feasibility, I think you have to ask at what price? What price are they paying the property owner compared to what price did they offer or not offer, the warehouse or the food bank? That is truly a reasonable question you could ask and make inquiries into, because it has to be feasible. And admittedly, if they go to a commercial facility, they may have to pay more, but maybe they should be paying more if it's feasible at a commercial facility for two reasons. Number one, at a commercial facility, they'd be seeking a variance of only double. The commercial facility, I think, would have 50-foot height as opposed to 35. So they'd only be asking for a variance of double height. And the other thing is that at a commercial facility, the neighbors would not be as affected by a big cell tower in their backyard, because it's already a commercial property. The other thing that is...that I want to point out is that...and I say everything in the...in the written documents, but please take a look at some of the statements that are made in the applicant's application. They say, "The facility will not adversely impact the adjacent properties in neighborhoods as the facility is screened from the view to the maximum extent possible." I mean, first off, even if it was screened to the maximum extent possible, I still believe, and I think everyone or many people in the room believe, that it will affect the properties. If you have a large industrial-looking 120-foot cell tower in your backyard, even if it's somewhat screened, it's going to affect your property. They also say the facility will have no negative impact on property values in the area. And that...that's what they say. I mean, did it make a true statement in your application, or do you not believe the statement in their application? That's what they said. Now, also, you will see that I've given you exhibits. Unfortunately, it's probably only the chairman who has a colored exhibit, but there has been a balloon test out there already. I'm not sure exactly what was meant or not meant by prior statements here. We believe this was a balloon test. My clients were at the premises when they saw balloons going up, and they took photographs of it. And it's very difficult to see. They hadn't...they weren't aware that this was going to happen. They didn't have great cameras to take the photographs. But I believe you can see that if those...if there is some type of balloon test, we don't know. This is what they were able to take a picture of. It's hard to see. I apologize for the quality of the photo.
Dot. A little red dot here.
It's very difficult to see, but it's very high up above anything. Once you see a huge monopole arising in the backyard over those trees, it is...it is going to affect your property value. And I mean, it's nice that the applicant says, "Oh, we'll do one." I think it would have been probably more candid to say, "One has been done, and, you know, these are the results." Or else somebody...some pirate came in and did the, you know, the balloon test without telling them. I don't know. But my clients seem to have already seen the balloon test, have already viewed the results, and believe that it truly will affect the property values. And that the statements that it will not affect the property values in the applicant's application is just wrong. I don't want to take up everyone's time, but I...we also just simply don't believe that this is in conforming with the character of the rural residential district. It will impact the character. And we're not sure that they've done anything to minimize the visual aspects. I know there are some times where they can sheath it and make it look like a tree or to make it look like a slide pole. And as I said, that I do not believe that where someone put the word "tower" in your own bylaws, saying, "Okay, this..."when we say doc height, we're not talking about towers or ventilation shafts, that you meant a 120-foot freestanding tower. And the...in the Massachusetts court agrees with that contention. But they're just trying to sneak through and say, "We don't need a variance. This is fine. Everything's hunky-dory. We meet all the criteria for the special permit." And indeed, the criteria for the special permit is not as hard as the criteria for the variance. It's going to be much harder for them to get the variance. But if they ever say that, "Look, whatever you do, you go...if you try to say no, you are putting a prohibition on our utilization of cell tower service in this town, you have to look at the feasible options." And I think where there's commercial facilities nearby, their own engineering says can work, but they say they're not interested. We have to say, "Not interested at what price? How much did you offer them? What is...how much per month are you going to pay the owners? What are you offering them?" Then we get into feasibility, then we get into reality. Let the commercial people take it as opposed to the residential people. Thank you very much.
Can I just add a few comments?
Go ahead.
As far as the commercial facilities, we did reach out to both of them. One of them wouldn't even respond to us, so it obviously wasn't about economics. The other one had no interest. We did have a dialogue with them, that one. So to say that we didn't look at those options is a misrepresentation.
I'm not saying you didn't look at them. I'm saying, how much did you offer them per month? That's the question. How much did you offer them per month? How much did you offer the other people?
When one doesn't respond, how do you offer them money?
Offer them money. You'll get a response. That's...
Email.
First of all, yeah, that...we've reached out to both commercial entities. There's no interest in doing a lease with us. So, you know, if someone wants to reach out to them and confirm that, great, but we've had that...we've had that conversation. As far as they're being...you're right, there is no prohibition on you denying an application. However, we have...we are representing that we have looked at other feasible options, including these commercial sites, and we're left then with residential sites. So to say that somehow there's a magic bullet commercial site out there, I would ask you to present that to me tonight. Well, I want to make it clear, and the courts have made this clear. The obligation to prove that there's no feasible commercial site is yours. Not the board's or the objectors.
And we have stated in here that we...unless there's a rebuttal, we have made that case.
And I've asked, "How much did you offer them for money? Compared to how much are you offering a residential site?"
First of all, that is proprietary, but economics alone is not a determinant in what is feasible.
No.
The federal law says the...
We have a legal argument you can go to. I want to say one thing. We don't get into what people rent their land for in this town, the planning board. It's not our decision. That's between the two business owners. I don't tell the Hatfield market what to charge for a gallon of milk. I don't tell Swazlofsky potatoes what to pay for a bag of potatoes, or if they rent land, or somebody rents land, or any business owner. We don't get into that. That's not our decision about economics or the law for this, what we're doing here tonight. We're here to decide whether an approval for a cell tower is not how much money somebody is making. I rest my case.
I understand that. Mr. Chairman. I'm not a lawyer. I understand, Mr. Chairman, but I'm also saying, where's the variance? That's the issue. And we believe that one is not required, and we'll supplement our legal brief to that effect after the hearing tonight. I would also add that with respect to real estate values, we do have a real estate report in the works from an appraiser. Similar properties to this location, the data would bear the fact that there is no diminution of property values. We have stated that in our brief, and we will prove that with a report from a certified real estate appraiser. I also just want to add that, yes, in fact, there was a balloon that did go up. My client has told me that it did go up after the filing of the application, but we have not...
Wrong. That's absolutely wrong.
The photo simulations that we're producing from that are still in the works, and we can add those to the...to our application. We can supplement our brief, or we can do another balloon float if that's what the board would like, because I'm assuming you'd want to see it as well.
Can I just, to the point...you made two points, I'd just like to comment on. One is the fact that you've stated in your application that there's no other feasible alternative sites. You know, stating that, anybody can say anything they want. It would be nice to know, have some documentation to that effect. Just saying that you...there's no other feasible alternative sites doesn't help me know what other feasible sites you might have looked at. And to your point about the diminution of value, again, anybody can say anything they want, so we're going to want to see that data.
Correct. Yep. And just as to the documentation, what we did in our site acquisition statement that was included with our application is we addressed some of the commercial properties that we wanted to demonstrate to the board that we approached first, and beyond that, we feel like there aren't really any suitable commercial lots that would work. So then we're in a rural residential zone, which is throughout this area, and, you know, we need to provide coverage to this area.
And I guess that goes back to my earlier question of your map coverage. Since that map goes so far to the east and the north, it just seems to me that going a little further to the west on Route 5 and 91, along the railroad tracks or somewhere in that area where there's a number of commercial and industrial sites, would how substantially... how significantly would that reduce your coverage?
We looked at one site out near Route 91, and it didn't provide coverage to this entire gap. It did cover 91. There was a property out that way, but it demonstrates that the radio frequency coverage from that location wouldn't cover into this coverage gap as well. You know, we're not limited to Route 91 here.
I could just add two more. One, if you accept the applicant's position regarding that they don't need a variance, you're accepting the proposition that there are no rules for the heights of towers in your town, and anyone can build, as a matter of right, a tower to up to, I believe it's 150 feet before the FAA cares. They can build it as a matter of right in your town. That's...so if you think that's what your bylaws say, that's essentially what they're arguing, is that you don't have any rules for heights of towers. Not at all. That's what they're saying. Also, I can see that we're getting to the issue of, well, there's their expert saying a certain thing regarding the wireless coverage. I would suggest that the board has a right to obtain their own expert, or to at least request of the applicant to provide some payment for that expert to get a second opinion. I mean, you need not rely totally on their expert and only their expert as to the wireless coverage. I suggest maybe having an expert take a look at this. And I don't want to take up any more time. I appreciate your time.
I would just add that the special permit process is what is designed under the bylaw to address the height of this facility. So it's not as if...and I take...I take offense to the comment that we were trying to sneak this through, as you alluded to earlier. I suspect the building inspector was sneaking it through as well, and I don't think that's the case.
Wow. That's good.
Anybody else that wants to talk against this proposal? Please state your name for the record.
Me?
Yes. Diane.
Do you need this mic? Do you use this?
No, I don't need it. My name is Diana Zinal, and I live at 65 Streets Road with my husband Jim and my son Peter, our children. Peter, who's 18, Henry, who is 14, and Hadley, who is just nine. The proposed cell tower would be located just several hundred feet from our rear property line. I want to begin by simply stating that a residentially zoned parcel located between two established neighborhoods is clearly no place for a 120-foot cell tower. It's just not. I have a multitude of concerns with this proposal, including the impact it would have on our health, our environment, and on the character and integrity of our neighborhood. In terms of health concerns, there is ample research to support that living close to a cell tower can have dire health consequences. In terms of the environmental impact, the field where this tower is proposed to be located is a beautiful piece of farmland and is commonly home to deer, fox, coyotes, bear, wild turkeys, and it is also a vital location for the egg-laying migration of the turtles from Hatfield Pond. turtles from Hatfield Pond. Of enormous concern for me is the damage that this tower will do to our property and that of our neighbors. The tower will dominate the view from our home and our yard. Its effects on the enjoyment and value of our home will be immediate, devastating, and permanent. For years, I lived on West Street in a mostly commercially zoned area. I was so disappointed when a large RV company went in next to my historic home, but there was nothing I could do about it. The zoning clearly allowed such a use. I then moved further north on West Street and actually lived across the street from Hampshire Construction, a business owned by the Bartlett family. At the time, Hampshire Construction was a busy and thriving business. They were good neighbors, keeping their property clean and attractive and conducting their business during appropriate working hours. I am hoping that the Bartletts will continue to be good neighbors by exploring other more appropriate sites for the cell tower. I went to the town hall and was able to obtain property cards on other properties owned by Michael and/or Susan Bartlett. Susan is the owner of a six-acre parcel of land zoned industrial, and Michael owns a total of almost 40 acres of industrially zoned land. All of these parcels are located beyond CNS wholesalers and are in close proximity to Interstate 91. I respectfully request that those parcels be explored by both the Bartletts and AT&amp;T Singular as options that may satisfy everyone. I cannot imagine that such a slight shift in location will significantly alter the tower coverage. The Bartletts would not lose their business opportunity, and there would be far less impact on a butter. Truthfully, we would probably still be able to see the tower located in that area, but it would not be directly in our backyard or near other residences. In the meantime, I ask that the planning board deny this application on the grounds that it is detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare, that it impairs the integrity of our zoning district, and because it does not minimize the visibility of visually degrading elements or protect the neighboring properties from potentially detrimental or offensive uses. Because of my experiences on West Street, I was careful before I purchased my home. I went to the town hall, and I checked to make sure that our home did not abut any commercial or industrial land. I want to stress to the members of the planning board how concerned I am with the precedent that this decision will set. It's not just the residents of Straits Road and North Hatfield Road that are concerned about this. I want to officially submit to you a petition opposing cell towers on residentially zoned properties. My neighbors and I have collected over 170 signatures from residents from all over town in just the last few days. People understand that allowing a cell tower in this residential part, on this residential parcel, would leave every neighborhood in our town vulnerable. Cell towers are popping up at a furious pace, and Hatfield needs to take proactive measures to ensure that they are placed in reasonable locations that will not alter the character that we as a community have painstakingly preserved. I ask that this statement and the attached petition be made part of the official record of this hearing.
Mr. Chairman, um, doesn't a petition have to be first certified by the town clerk and the vote, I mean, the people sign it as registered voters before it...
I don't know.
Huh?
I don't know.
I believe it does, a petition. I think the registrars have to, I don't know if we have a registrar here. I don't know if your wife is here, Paul, but, um, doesn't the registrars have to certify the names of the petition?
I'm looking to see if there's any official signature on here, but I don't...
No, I did not submit that to the town clerk.
I think you have to do that first before we can accept it at a meeting.
Well, understand that there's that much support over the...
Yes, I would suggest, you know, just when Lydia, uh, pitches back, you know, just have a registrar.
Can you tell me how much several feet is behind your property?
Pardon me?
You said several hundred feet.
About 400 feet.
It's about 400.
About. Everything is about.
Well, we didn't have the plans at the time, but it's, it's close, Corey. It's not 700 feet.
It's not 700. I can tell you that.
And I'll tell you, when you look at the picture, the little red dot of a balloon is very unimpressive compared to what the cell tower will look like, which they don't have a picture of. How do they not have a mock-up little picture of what it's gonna look like?
They know how long folks...
According to the map, it's 562 to the property.
Oh, good. Why don't we take this under advisement until we get all this information and, and take a vote on it? It's a future meeting. You haven't got enough. They're gonna get stuff for us. Everybody's gonna get us.
I know.
But we don't have it.
I'd like to listen to it.
Oh, you can listen. Go ahead. You're chairman.
According to the document that, uh, AT&amp;T has submitted, it's to the edge of their properties where the cell tower is, 582 feet to the Zinal property, map 21156.
62.
And how close is it to the abutter? How is close, is it to the abutter to our west? 400 feet?
Oh, the, the Pedrusnys?
No, not the Pedrusnys.
Is it map 211 lot 42?
The Beldens?
To these...
Sheen's is 585. 562.
Yeah.
It's 400. It's 400 feet to this one. Every other one is all...
What about this one? How can you say it's 600 feet from this one?
It's way here.
From this one?
Yes. Mary Lyon, Universal Structures.
This is me. One of them.
Yeah, 400.
400.
Okay, and then this, okay, and then this one is, this one is says 562 to there.
This one's about 450 here. This, and this is to the lot line. The structures are obviously in.
Okay, and then this one is approximately the same.
How far away are you from the house that's rented to this place?
500 feet still isn't very far for a tower.
Probably 562 feet.
I mean, you're talking one distance, you're going 700 feet, 500. What do you got, 1,000 feet, the length of that field? I don't, I don't know what it is. I didn't measure it.
How about the state house across the way?
That's right. Just mention.
I think they might be here.
But, length?
150 feet, 200 feet. Wait, which one is that?
The state, keep state wards in there. State run that.
That's a home.
This one?
That's, that's across from CNS.
Right, that's the one that's about, we, that I alluded to, is about 450 feet.
Okay.
To the structure.
He has another statement to read.
I do. I, we, um, of, one of the other abutters was, did not able to come tonight because she had to stay home and take care of her very elderly father, but Mr. Dostal gave her permission to let me read her comments. Um, "My name is Sophia Greenlaw. I reside at 76 Straits Road. I am opposed to the installation of the proposed cell tower. This 120-foot monopole tower will be a visual blemish looming over our neighborhood and eyesore. Ours is a growing neighborhood. It's a family neighborhood with many children and elderly residents. I believe this tower will ruin the quality of our neighborhood. I very strongly oppose, oppose cell towers being installed in any residentially zoned area in our community. There must be other more suitable locations out of sight away from families and homes with less safety risk to children. I am concerned about devaluation of property. The negative impact on property value will affect our locality and possibly have an adverse effect on surrounding properties. I am also apprehensive of adverse health effects. Are the RF standards reliable? Are they current? Do they take into account long-term exposure? Are health concerns justified? And if not, won't even the perception of health risks and potential noise from the generator influence potential home buyers and so decrease home values? What is the fall zone and the distance from the other closest properties? And does zoning allow this height? In the event the tower is approved, will new singular wireless compensate property owners for property devaluation? I ask that this statement be made part of the official record of this hearing."
There's too many openings on this, so I'm, I'd like to reiterate what Cory Barrow said that, you know, we should postpone this public hearing. There's too many things out there that we have not seen.
I understand.
And both parties wanna bring things in. You had that petition out there.
Bring it all in, have another hearing. Not another hearing.
So I'll make a motion to postpone this hearing to another date.
Second.
At the next public hearing. I mean, there's just so many, no, I...
You're shutting anybody off.
I'm not shutting anybody off.
We wanna listen to...
All right, go.
The comments tonight, and then we'll decide...
I made a motion, so...
So what do I do now?
Because we need more information, and then everybody can discuss it in a more...
I think we should, I think we should.
What, excuse me?
I think we should hear from the people.
They're just gonna come back with more things. You have a petition out there that's not certified yet by the town clerk, um, so...
Have we heard a second yet?
We haven't heard a second yet.
So you got a second?
I seconded. I seconded. Way back. I'll hurry you up.
So we have a second to...
Postpone the meeting.
Postpone. Continue.
Not stop it. Postpone the meeting till we have more information. We've done this in the past.
I understand that, but I, I think that we oughta...
I made a motion.
Vote it down.
Vote it, take a vote.
All right. All those in favor of, uh, continuing the meeting?
It's gonna be a tie. Aye, aye, aye.
Yes.
Postponing the meeting.
Postpone the meeting, the public hearing. Till we get everything in. Get everything in. There's a lot of things that are not out there, and I will have the discussion, and that's, I made the motion, it's been seconded, so...
Well, can we have a discussion on the motion?
Yeah, yes, exactly.
Well, I, I think since so many people came out tonight, that if, if there are people in the audience that have something that they wanna say in addition to what has already been said, I mean, we don't, I mean, in other words, to add to the, add to the discussion as opposed to just reiterating what's already been said, I think the, whether this is certified or not, there's a significant amount of people's names on that list. I think we should give people a chance to speak now, since they came out on a night during the summer.
I think that we need to let everybody have their say, and then we can make a decision on, uh, the data from the pros and the cons that has, has been brought up.
At this meeting?
No, no, not a decision to, you know, let's hear everybody out, and then send those folks off, the petition and the abutters, and they can, uh, get pictures, get documentation, or, like, there's so many other opening things that we talk about. The next meeting, they would present either, whether it's photos or certification of this document, and, uh...
Yes, I've been on the planning board for 15 years, so I didn't realize that. But I would draw the motion.
Okay.
50 years.
Can we ask that people who do comment add to what's already been, in other words, if it's ditto, just say ditto. I mean, we, there's a pretty good group of people here. We maybe even have hands raised as to how many people oppose the project, but...
Sir, I'd like to talk. Your word across the border. Open, I wanna verify that point. My name is John Lamott, and I'm a part owner of Universal Structures. Uh, we own the house at 74 North Hatfield Road, uh, which was built, um, in 1993 for the state of Massachusetts. I don't know if you're aware of this, but within the house, we have people who are severely developmentally disabled and have been there since 1993. Some quite elderly, very sensitive individual. I have somebody here who's an advocate for Lamott, so who can speak more specifically about their issues, okay? I have something here that I'd like to submit to the board that addresses several of our issues that we require of you to fulfill your burden of proof to satisfy us that no harm or, uh, future, uh, health risk would be resulted from, from your proposal. All right, so I submit this to the board. I submit a copy to you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, if you can sit, put your side plan back up there, please. Okay, that, with, uh, the, uh, show the locus, or we're, approximately to our lot?
Your lot is right here, and this is where the tower is.
Okay, this is the tower. According to our measurements, you're not, we're a lot closer than 400 feet, but our property corner from your tower is approximately 200 feet.
Yeah, I, I was referencing the structure.
The structure. Our structure, yes. Okay, uh, I don't know if I agree with that, 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 that distance, we have to look at our, at our plans to, uh, to verify that point. We are 200 feet definitely to our property. No, no more concern. Number one is, we haven't seen any kind of MPE, MPE studies. I'm assuming that's not, it hasn't been delivered yet, or your consultant, or what, what, what the status is at?
Correct. We'll furnish that at the next hearing.
At next hearing?
Yep.
Okay. Does it address disabilities? People who have disabilities and the effect that that could have?
Yeah, the, the FCC, we comply with all FCC guidelines, and, uh, as I think Mr. McLaughlin would agree, the, uh, 1996 Telecommunications Act has taken all health concerns, uh, in the, uh, context and under the umbrella of the FCC, and, uh, local boards are not...
All health concerns.
Correct.
All health concerns. 100% of all health concerns.
From exposure...
That's for the record? 100% of all health concerns?
From radiation exposure, 100%.
Okay. Of all, of people of all, of all status?
Correct. All status.
All right. Okay, secondly?
And we will prove that the exposure is a fraction of the maximum permissible emissions standards and thresholds of the federal government.
Okay, all right, well, we look forward to that. Secondly, the appraisal, I mean, we, we like to look at in detail. I mean, to, to say to us that it's not gonna have any impact on the value of property, I mean, I was in the business, okay, and for appraisals, I know that, uh, it's also a more of an art than it is a science, all right? I can't see how, how this cannot have an impact on people's values. I mean, if you're gonna, this common sense says, I'm a potential buyer, I'm standing in my backyard, and I see this 120-foot monopole, I mean, it's not gonna, uh, it's not gonna, you know, give you a warm, fuzzy feeling, you know, about the property. I'm sorry, but I, I gotta have to disagree with that. Secondly, in your, your road, we haven't seen any grades shots, even though it's not, it's a gravel road, it can still block water. We're concerned with our septic system in the back, that the water situation may build up and, and shut the system down, or potentially create a wetland, which create more problems for us in the future. All right, but, the key that we're, that we're really focusing on is the quiet enjoyment of the property by the people who, with the disabilities. That's what we're concerned about. I'm gonna ask Carol to talk about, uh, the sensitivities of these people and what, what you, you know, what we're, what we're really working with here, okay? Carol?
Hi. My name is Carol Fernand. I'm a Thai registered nurse, and I worked for the state of Massachusetts for four years on, with people with disabilities, and my neighbors were asking to come up here, 'cause they had, told me they were building a, a tower, cell tower. And so I went online, and I says, "Jeez, I have people with seizure disorders and stuff like that, you weren't, what that electric magnetic field has on their, on them, themselves." Or even the research that they're talking about, uh, people with disabilities where if you, I don't think anybody's ever worked with people with disabilities, but, and mental retardation and, uh, mental health issues, but they have tendencies, they have problems to adjust to, changes. Um, there's, and with these magnetic fields, kinda doing a little research on it, that has problems with people, their sleeping problems, thinking processes. Um, and now that house has been there since 1993, so those individuals have been living there for all these years. You got elderly people that have disabilities. Um, anybody who has a metronic device, if, I, I can't tell you what their health issues are in the house because of HIPAA, but, um, electronic devices, like the metronic devices, I don't know if anybody's familiar with, um, pain stimulators and stuff, those magnetic fields can cause a problem with those. those magnetic fields can cause a problem with those and they're so close to that area with that magnetic field that's down to the ground can cause some serious problems. There's also dizziness and fatigue and the other symptoms that these people, these individuals can experience. They can have immune system deficiencies and as it is, they already, some of them already have immune deficiency problems. So now you're just piling this back on and stuff, but from the healthy aspect, I think that's, it's a detrimental thing for the, for the individuals who live there now.
Okay, thank you. I think also too, I mean, to follow up on what some of the other people have said about finding a different location, your, your zone that is gonna increase, what you're showing here, I mean, do you know what, what exactly the radius or the diameter of that, that purple area is?
Exactly, I don't.
Couldn't you get, can you give a guess, what do you think?
It's about a mile or two.
About a mile or two? Okay, I think if, finding an industrial site, which are very close to where, to where you're proposing it, right across the street, there's all the industrial land around over there and I made a very good point of that, adjusting it a few hundred feet or, or a quarter of a mile probably isn't really gonna significantly adjust that, that diameter. Would you agree?
I'm gonna have to see the location first.
You have to see the location, right, okay.
And the height, that is what I want.
All right, well, I feel it's pretty flat place, so I mean, I don't think you have too much of an elevation difference.
Oh, it depends.
All right, but I, I think, I, being in the business and I know going through search sites from my own experience, maybe not on your extent or your kind of money, there's always more sites, there's always more alternatives, all right? It depends how hard you wanna beat the bushes, you know, so I, I think, and we stated very clearly in there, putting something like this in a residential area, I think it helps you guys, but I think in the long run it doesn't, it doesn't help the immediate neighbors at all in the neighborhood. All right, so I think there's, there's definitely more viable alternatives in probably not too far off of that, off of that location that there, that there's somebody. All right, thank you.
I have a question about the purple, because I'm not really good with the visual. My name is Shannon Wedden, I'm at 119 People Road. I'm trying to understand in a purple area, when it's one to two miles, from where the tower's going to where I am is probably a half a mile and then you run into Waitley. So are we trying to help Waitley out as well, is that where this is going, because I can't really see? And I also wanna know, you keep saying it's gonna help the coverage, how much of that is farm land versus the houses, what people living there, is that what I really wanna know? So if you move it over to where the rail tracks are, you're now moving it over to where there's commercial people with cell phones every day there, where there's more people living. So if you can use that coverage, I'm not opposed to having more coverage from the cell phone, not, but why are you trying to give coverage to the deer and the bears? I don't know.
They got collars on.
But that's just my question, I just wanna know, what's the harm of finding, is it not their land that we're asking you to go to? Is that what it is? Is it someone else's land? I don't know. That's just my question.
So it would behoove perhaps the applicant to provide additional information on number of users, number of potential users that you're looking at, what, you know, what, what's, what's the clientele you're looking to handle by, by this cell tower being where you wanna put it?
Homes, vehicles.
Yeah, yeah.
My name is Carrie Martin, I live at 66 Streets Road and I just wanna say ditto to what Diana said. I also signed the petition. We don't need a cell phone tower right across the street from me. I personally could live without a cell phone if I needed to look at a tower outside my living room window.
Mr. Shan?
Hi, my name is Eugene Sheehan, my wife and I designed it up 51 St. Grace Road. And I have a written statement here, but I'm gonna skip some of the things because things have already been said. But one thing is, seeing an asset located on North Hatfield Road across from us, and in the winter, the smell of diesel fumes is very intense in our backyard coming from all those trucks. Now, this tower has a diesel generator component, which means we're gonna bring those gnaxis fumes and noise a lot closer, which is gonna be an annoyance and a potential health hazard for people in the neighborhood. Now, my wife did some research on a computer and there were studies done in Germany, Israel, and Australia that indicated individuals living in close proximity to cell towers may incur miscarriages, depressed immune systems, decreased cases of leukemia in children, and other health issues due to these radio frequencies transmitted by the cell tower. So there's a neighborhood there and, and there's a lot of kids there. I think this should be taken into consideration and that should be a prime consideration, their health. Thank you, and I'll be ending this all before.
You'll hand it in to you. Yeah, the, in the back, just, Ms. Reynolds?
I wanna say ditto to what Diana said and what Mr. Shan just said. I moved to this neighborhood after looking for a house in Hatfield for over three years and I love our little neighborhood, I love that we have the farm fields and our hope when we moved here was that those farm fields would maybe, if they weren't gonna be farmed over time, maybe these large housing developments where there'd be big lots and there'd be more families living there. Not that we'd be looking at more like a cell phone tower or any more commercially zoned lots, that's not our hope for our neighborhood. And my son and I spend hours rescuing turtles, that is something we enjoy doing. I don't wanna give that up, knowing that, that radiation is killing off the animals in the area and then knocking down hungry chickens, that would really make everybody really sad for our neighborhood and I'm really concerned about potential health risks, but I think that's been addressed already.
Right. I think there was somebody else, someone else in the back? Yes.
Hi, my name is Judy Pedersen, I live at 61 St. Road with my daughter Haley and my husband Edward. I'm not gonna reiterate everything everybody said because I certainly didn't agree with it. I just wanted to address one thing that, and I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name, the woman in the blue in the front.
My name is Susan Bartlett.
Susan Bartlett, thank you. When you were listing out all the proponents for the tower, one of the things
No, I wasn't listing the proponents for the power, I was listing how it all fit into the bylaws and how all the criteria were met to grant the special permit, so.
Well, I believe one of the things that you mentioned was that it would bring value because we lost power and, and phones during the storm of 2012.
That is correct.
So does that mean we will never lose cell service?
Um, no, but when you lost your house phone and you couldn't make phone calls, self, there's, I have one bar right now in this building, so I'm not quite sure how I'm supposed to make phone calls. I can't use my cell phone at my home either, so I'm not quite sure how I'm supposed to communicate with people.
Right, that's not my question, my question is when there's a storm and phone lines go down, cell service goes out as well, so does it really matter if you have that tower?
Cell service does not go out, we have, that's why we have the emergency backup generators.
I didn't hear.
You can't charge your phone, how you make a phone call?
Okay, okay.
You can't get my car, you can't get there.
Get recognized to give them help. One at a time, one at a time. In the, Ms. Sinal?
I just wanted to add a couple of things and that, we're certainly not suggesting that the Bartletts aren't able to do something with that lot and, and I think it may, maybe it was Jean or Jessica that touched on, you know, it's a perfect spot for residential lots to be developed. In fact, I believe the sewer goes on North Hatfield Road, so those could potentially even be sewered lots, which I think we all know in Hatfield are worth quite a bit of money, so we're not, you know, we understand, we're not trying to take opportunities away from them or restrict the use of their land, have it be nothing, is what I'm saying. But I also had a question and it's, it gets back to the issue about the tower and the variance. It's my understanding the planning board recently voted down like a windmill on Main Street, is that true?
Well, we were, no, there was a question about allowing windmills.
In a residential?
In a residential area.
And what was the outcome?
Town meeting.
It went to town meeting.
Town meeting. You want a town meeting?
I did not vote.
Town meeting voted it down, not this last town meeting, it was a couple of town meetings ago.
Town meeting voted it down.
Several years.
That was only 100 feet.
Right.
That was proposed to be 100 feet, so I just, I think that's of note, that town meeting voted down 100-foot freestanding tower and
We're gonna take all our telephone poles down?
Well, they're already there.
You're talking about voting everything out?
If we're gonna take down all the electric poles, what, how did we ever grow up without cell phones? You wanna go down that road?
I don't even know how to run one, I don't know what button you push.
Exactly.
So what the hell do I care about it? True.
Well, and there's, I, I believe that there's, and I don't have all the information, I don't know if you would, but there's, there's, there's technology evolving that actually will, what's that? You're gonna talk about, okay, I'm, I'm out of my league, I'm gonna sit down on this one.
Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Pete Casey, I'm a resident of Hatfield. How do you know, Corey?
Go ahead.
I'd ask the board to request of the petitioner that they present alternative technologies that are used throughout the United States in the form of arrays that don't require the height, but it may be at more expense to the petitioner so that the signal is still spread out through the area in such that you don't need to have such a big tower. I'd also like the board to ask the petitioner if the reason for the tower, structural use of the tower, is that they plan on renting out space on it. If it was just for their sole use, would they be able to use the tower scaled down? Okay, I think there's two or three slots available for other carriers, so they're subleasing it as well. That I'm sure adds to the scope of the project, additional wires, frequency, you know, people are concerned about the RF signal that goes out, there's their signal and then there's the signal that whoever they lease the pole out to goes out. So maybe the RF signal will be much lower if they use it for their own use, exclusive use. The other thing I'd ask the board to consider with regard to industrial projects such as this and other ones that are before the town, and I'm sure this would be a matter that would have to go before a town meeting, is that when projects of a technological nature are presented, does that ask the petitioner to provide a bond or a covenant for its removal once the technology becomes obsolete? What happens if people go to these new arrayed technologies and these towers are left in our community? Who pays for them to come down? We can all see across the landscape what happens to old buildings once they're taken down. I would ask the board to request that if they have
Let's just, you know, put a clause in, take it down when you leave.
It was asked of me and a project I did to provide a covenant, I'm sure this may be asked of someone else.
We would agree to that and we'd post a bond to cover the removal costs.
Yes.
Martha Church, 139 Main Street. I, I guess I'm very surprised that there's no picture of what this monopole is supposed to look like. I don't know why, is it because it's that ugly, is, I, I'm not sure. But secondly, I also question how this monopole is going to affect the views from the historic districts that surround the cell tower? So we have the Brad Street Historic District, George Wether District, we have, we have the Prescott Street Historic District, the North Hatfield.
North, North Main Street and Kings Creek and North Street.
I think maybe
North Hatfield, Brad Street, and also West Street.
So there's many historic districts that are
There's a picture of it.
There's going to be affected by, if this cell tower goes in. And I do have to say that, you know, driving down 91, seeing the cell tower by Brockway Smith, it's the biggest I saw in the world because there you're driving down 91, there's Melchurg Loop, it's beautiful and there's a cell tower. And to me, it's just, it's a visual thing. Okay. It's probably drawing that picture. Yeah, at least, you know, it's like a little idea. Thank you.
Just wanna follow up quick, John Lamott again for 74 North Hatfield Road. Good point made up about the diesel over there, I wasn't aware of that, but I knew there were generators, but I didn't think for, for the diesel fumes. We're, we're very interested in what the effects of those emissions would be on, on our property, all right? And if there's any potential risk of the occupants inhaling it. You know, as you said, it was very sensitive people in here, you need to know, I think, all emissions that are gonna be generated from, from this facility and what the implications would be. And I, and the burden of proof should be on them, I mean, in, in every respect, all right? And it should be in writing, not, not given to us on the night of the, of the hearing either, so we can study it properly. It should be given to us, I think, well in advance of the hearing, so we have time to study it and we call upon our own experts to look at it. Thank you.
I have a question for you, John. Do you have a generator on your property in case the power goes out?
Excuse me?
Do you have a generator on your property if your power goes out at this?
No, we do not.
Why not?
Correct, we do have one, I'm sorry, it is a propane.
I'm sorry?
It is a propane.
Yeah. Someone else had their hand up in the back earlier? Close the hearing, gotta go home. Anybody else that wants to speak against the proposal? Petitioner, you have any final comments?
No, I would just add, as far as the, the generator, we have a double walled, 250-gallon diesel tank, it exercises itself once a week for about a half hour. Other than that, there's no noise, no fumes, no nothing unless there's an emergency.
We'd like to have that in writing, please.
Okay. Can we also ask that it's, if it ever gets put in, that the exercise part of it is during the day?
Please stand and state your name, please, for the record.
James Sinal, 65 St. Road. I just ask that if, if and when, if this ever happens, that the generator is scheduled to have a scheduled test at an appropriate time, at night or on the weekends or anything like that. We can do that.
And he said in case there's an emergency. Now, an emergency could go on for days when they lose power, that means that generator could run for days. So to say it goes on for a half an hour, that's a crap.
That's for testing.
That's for testing, if there's an emergency, the, the tank of fuel would keep it running for about 48 hours and hopefully the emergency would have subsided or we can get a truck out there to add additional diesel. I assume that people would wanna have cell phone, cell phone coverage in an emergency like that and might find any small noise associated with that is worth it to be able to contact loved ones and contact the authorities in the event of an emergency.
More.
You know, I actually have a question for the board.
Go ahead.
All these people are asking for proof from AT&amp;T about health and things like that. Isn't it you guys that should be asking for proof, why, why?
We're listening to both sides of the argument. Listen to both sides, but they gotta bring in proof too. We're collecting data from, from the petitioner and from the
So are you requesting that data as a board or, okay, all right, I'm just
We're listening to all the concerns.
Okay.
A lot of statements with no backing tonight.
And could I add that in the interim, the board, the board speaks to town council about the board's ability to consider health effects in rendering its decisions.
The board out.
I'm gonna close, or close this hearing. Right? Close the, close the hearing. Continue it. From both sides and then we're gonna have a discussion on, amongst ourselves regarding the course of action that we're gonna take tonight.
Can I just ask one quick question? Do you, is there a timeframe in which you have to act or by default they get this permit?
No. Yeah, we have to, we have to act like, I think, in 90 days or 180 days.
From when?
Well, I mean, I wanna make sure that we stay on top of this and that it doesn't just become a permit by default.
I can clarify that, we have to have a public hearing within 65 days of the, of the date the town clerk received the application. This hearing can be continued indefinitely as long as all parties agree to the continuance.
We've had the hearing.
There's no, there's no sunset or, and
Which is continuing.
There could be, if we just didn't take any action, there could be. But as long as both parties, that is the town and the, and the petitioner agree to a continuance for more information, it could be continued and continued and continued as long as everybody agrees to it.
Okay, and I assume you guys agree to this?
Yes, we agree to it.
So, we're gonna close this hearing. I'm gonna make a motion. You're the chairman. I'm gonna make a motion that we continue another public hearing to get Set a date. The facts regarding the numerous questions that were brought up. One thing I'm concerned about is these 100 signatures. I don't know if all these people are actually registered voters. They've been verified?
No, not yet, no, no.
They're just handed in, they're just signature.
It's a regulation that says it has, I mean, who says it has to be certified? Because you can't just submit a petition to
Because we don't know if, a petition has to be presented by, on a petition by registered voter, so the registrar's
They have to verify that they're a registered voter, I, I don't know the
Can I just add that, is that petition designed to change the zoning bylaws to prohibit towers on residential?
No, it simply says that it allows the signing of them on residency. By design.
It's actually a question for the town, they're
This is reflecting their opposition. Opposition to it, but don't we have to?
We could, we could have Lydia look at it to make sure.
We could have Lydia look at it to make sure that...
We have to have, how do I know those people live there?
But the town clerk, you know, is the one that will make the decision.
Hey, you two guys, set a date. You got to set a date.
Or do you want it, what, in September?
Got a calendar in front of you? Go to August.
Next meeting is scheduled for September 9th.
August. You can have a special one.
It should really be, I think it should be a meeting just for, for this year. Okay?
Okay.
Because you got, we got like four other people on this agenda for tonight.
I know.
And I think that, you know, it's going to be a long discussion, so I would try to, you know, I would not put it as part of a regular meeting in September. I'd like to see this...
How about September 9th? That's a Tuesday.
Sure.
When's our regular meeting in September?
September 3rd.
3rd.
Why don't we go in August?
I'm not going to be here.
You're not going to be?
So we go to the 9th, and we'll put it, set it. You got to have four people.
Guys going to be here.
September 9th.
September 9th is a Tuesday.
I'm official.
Set it.
All right, make a motion that we continue the meeting.
The four of us have to be here.
Can I just add, if, is the board requesting...
It's the second Tuesday, it'll be a select meeting that night.
Is the board requesting that we conduct a balloon float? And if so, could we agree on that? No, we didn't say that.
Have a discussion about that.
You didn't say anything about the balloon float?
We want a balloon float.
That was brought up with a picture with the two dots in it.
I think we shouldn't, maybe we should be present, and I, we should be identified when they do.
That ain't going to sway me.
We have at least one or a couple of...
How long does that take? You have, take six months to get a balloon float?
Excuse me?
Does it take, does it take an inordinate amount of time to get a...
Balloon float?
No, we just schedule it a couple weeks in advance, and then post, I mean, if we want public notice, to make public notice as well.
Okay. So, I guess what I'd like to see is a balloon float? A verification of the voting list, or have our town clerk look at the voting list? I would like to, I would like to see some documentation. There's been numerous comments made on both sides. One is about the property values in other areas where a cellphone tower exists. They talk about depreciation of homes, or devaluation of houses. I'd also like to see some, some comments, or several comments made about health concerns. I'd like to see some comments or some documentation that radio frequency waves are causing brain cancer, and DNA problems, and childbirth problems, and all this. I did some research myself, I haven't been able to find any. I know that smoking cigarettes causes lung cancer. I know that drinking excessive amounts of alcohol causes destruction of your liver, which are documented cases, but to my, my own personal research, I haven't seen anything about radio frequency waves causing cancer or anything else. I know that the American Cancer Society has come out with a statement that says they have no conclusion. For those, for those folks that are stating that there's potential health hazards, I'd like to see some documented, or the board would like to see some documented cases regarding the health issues.
What about the photo, the schematic photos? They were saying they could do photos of what it will look like from various properties?
We can produce photo simulations based on the balloon float.
Okay.
And in regards to that, would that be just the AT&amp;T pieces that stick out, or would you also have, if you sell to other carriers, additional pieces that stick out?
Yeah, we're applying for our facility tonight.
So it would just be the top AT&amp;T?
But you, but you sort of, you sort of opened the door, though, because you've got, even in your schematic drawing, you've got the proposed future carrier antennas.
Yes, that's right. Most cities and towns want, encourage co-location, so we showed that. But, as I said, we're glad to, I mean, we could add showing other facilities, but I want to be clear, we're applying here tonight for just our facility, and any subsequent carriers that come along would likewise need to go to you for a special permit, and if there was some sort of impact that that additional facility had, you would have the right to deny that.
Yeah. Sort of opened the door, but it's, because of course, it makes sense, as with the Brockway Smith antenna, that you add other stuff on there, because you're sort of putting it all in one spot.
But I wouldn't want our application to be judged on something that is speculative. We don't know for sure whether anyone else will go on the tower. We're surmising that... Now, listen.
Down.
We're, we've surmised from the beginning that we, there may be other carriers that have similar coverage gaps. We don't know for sure. We're only speaking here tonight about AT&amp;T. What we're showing is there's additional space on the tower if there are indeed carriers that have a need to co-locate antennas on that tower. We're showing where that could happen.
Does the economic feasibility of the tower to AT&amp;T, is it dependent upon eventually renting out those other spaces?
The towers were the only antennas on it.
I think we should also ask, if I may, for the information on, you noted earlier in your remarks that there were no other feasible alternatives, and that was just a statement made, that we have some documentation as to what other attempts you made to look at other sites. I think someone else asked about if it was moved, you know, 1,000 feet or so, and the gentleman said he'd have to look at what that coverage gap would be if it were moved to more of the sort of commercial industrial corridor of 91 Route 5, recognizing that you're not just getting cars on the highway, but rather, how much does that...
And assuming they have a willing landlord as well.
Right.
Can that also, you know, the purple is a bubble. Can you specify if it's being affected? Because I'm a little bit worried that that's just undeveloped land right now.
Well, yeah, we had asked earlier, and you had said that you would give us some, some information about users and potential users and population base there that you're looking at covering.
Bring it to the floor, it'll be nice. I'm Mr. Chairman, let's keep going.
Mr. Chairman, I understood that everyone was supposed to stand up and state their name and address before they spoke. It's not being done.
Okay.
You did.
We closed the hearing. So is there anything else that we want from either side?
Could there just be one more thing that's asked of this?
No, we already closed the hearing, I'm sorry. I asked if there was any other questions, and there weren't. We're going to be here all night. You guys got anything else you want to ask?
No.
Nope, I'm fine.
I'm saying, continue it, and let's go.
Well, you need to stay on Wednesday night. You could run into other people's meetings.
Everybody knows what they got to bring in.
September 10th.
It would have to be the 10th.
It's the day before Labor Day.
Well, we're trying to figure that out.
9th, you said.
I thought we wanted to have a certain night for this, just for this, just dedicated to this.
August.
Just dedicate a meeting for this, but not on a selectman's night. Because they're going to be told by, selectmen can't do two meetings.
So they have the night.
September 10 is a Wednesday.
September 10, that's fine.
September 10th, or August?
September 10.
September 10th.
Is that good?
All right with me.
So the next meeting will be September 10th.
7:30?
7:30.
Before that, though, should we try and arrange... Are you going to...
Yeah. Whenever they, whatever their schedule is.
We should arrange the balloon float prior to that.
Yes.
So that's your...
We're going to need at least two weeks prior to that. So what we could do is, we'll agree to do one in advance of the hearing that gives us enough time to produce photo simulations. I would give two weeks' notice and an advertisement. Is that good?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, there's no further discussion on this particular concern, but rest in peace, is that correct?
That's right. The only thing we're...
Every piece of discussion that pertains to this issue through the next meeting.
Except Paul, we're trying to finish up, we're trying to clarify the balloon float. That's all.
And there will be notice given?
No.
There will be notice given? Because the balloon float that was done before was maybe a couple of hours on Good Friday, from maybe 8 to 10 in the morning.
I didn't even have notice that they were doing the balloon.
If you guys want to have a separate discussion, you can have it outside, please.
We would, we would hear from them as to when they said it takes about two weeks of schedule, and then we would be able to actually notice it and have it, have it...
It's published in the paper, right?
Published in the paper.
Okay.
Yes. Published in the paper, right, the hearing. All right, so Paul, you made a motion?
I made a motion.
So the meeting's September 10th.
Okay, continue it.
Continue.
This, until September 10th.
So I'll second it.
All those in favor? Chairman?
Hi.
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 Come back.
Father Brownellus?
Yeah.
If I get your folks to be in there, I'd love to do a...
Bill Mazick, center.
It's terrible, you have to make these other guys wait.
He's not here. He was there.
That's wrong. I mean, those other people have to wait, obviously. Why you said it was...
It's an informal meeting.
Mazick out there?
I don't know.
You got to know him, you're a news reporter.
What was your name? I'll give you my card.
Oh, great. Sorry.
I don't see him.
What, Mazick went home? Is Diane DeRoger here?
Yep.
Okay. Front and center. Move up front, so pull the chairs up so you can sit up with us.
Oh, that's all right. I just want to see who's here, the other stuff, and people that sign.
That's close enough.
Come on up here if you want.
No, 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 the people that were here, listening.
I assume you got a copy of my letter that I wrote you, what, two or three weeks ago? I don't have a copy of it. But I think I said that you can build the office, and it was, what, 1,100 square feet or something like that? But yet, it appears as though you're still parking cars there that don't belong there.
We have, as you said in your letter, we had the permit...
There's Mazick.
Here it is. To be able to rent out this space.
No, we got her, no, we took your next.
And so we rented out space to Home Care Collective, which is my archivale here, and River Valley Market, which is Tom Bradbury representing them.
Renting what? The office space?
Right.
Well, I drove through there several days, probably every day for a week around noon time, because I go out for lunch, and there were anywhere between 27 and 32 cars there. There are that many people working in that building?
I have 110 employees myself, with collective home care. And so they come and go at, they're, rarely are, do I have my home health aides into the office in such huge numbers. But I have a full nursing staff that comes and goes, that's nine people, plus three office administrators.
And they leave their cars there? How do they get to where they're going?
These are the, well, first, I've got two different sets of employees. So I've got about 11 people who work within the building 40 hours a week.
Okay.
And then the others, the home health aides, then, are the ones that come and go, come on a daily basis, dropping our paperwork and other such things. That's one percentage of what you're seeing. There's also, there's also other...
Because all the cars were parked there all day, because I go back in the afternoon, and I know, on one Saturday morning, I drove by, and there was maybe six or eight cars, and there was a group of people that were getting into another vehicle.
Yes, this River Valley Market is using the upstairs as rented space, and then they needed more space for their cars.
For their parking.
So they told them, fine.
So they're parking there and going to the store?
Yes.
Doesn't that make that a commercial parking lot?
No. Commercial parking lot, to me, means that I am renting just the parking space to you, and that's what we're paying for. We're renting the office space to them, and they, as a...
And it just so happens that they have 12 cars?
No, no, no. They asked us, they asked us if it was possible to use more of the parking space, and we said sure.
So what you're saying, they're using the parking space, but they're not paying you for it?
Right.
So that makes it non-commercial? Because there's no money involved?
Right.
Except in the office.
I'm sorry?
Office rental.
You're still parking cars there where people are working in an alternate location?
Yes.
That's a commercial parking lot. Just because there's no money to change his hands doesn't make it non-commercial.
By definition, commercial is for profit.
I guess, I don't understand.
Yeah, I guess if we, if we got the dictionary out, it would say that. But you're parking cars in Hatfield for people that are working in Northampton, and they're shuttling down there. That's not the intent of parking spaces, is to not...
For the building.
Again, it's, it's not commercial, because you're not getting paid, but it's commercial small c in that you're allowing someone else to use your parking spaces.
Who's attending in the building?
Yeah.
Yes, but if you take that 1,100 square feet, the building code says only so many people can occupy that space. I think it's 300 square feet per person. So there's four to maybe five or six people, and there would be five or six cars out there for those folks that work up at the second floor. This gentleman says he has 11. How many do you have?
I'm no longer there.
Okay.
Rending out the space.
Well, there are 30. So where are the other 18 or 19 coming from? The River Valleys.
Right. And I guess I don't see the problem...
Well, 18 or 19, but yet, there are four people that work upstairs, or five people. Give them the benefit of the doubt, six. So that means there are 13 cars there for people that are working at another location.
But that are part of the same business, so...
Doesn't make any difference. Doesn't make any difference.
I guess I would...
They don't work at that location, therefore, you don't need the parking for them at that location.
But I have the parking. It doesn't harm anybody.
Well, you can argue with me all day long, but it's a commercial parking lot, and we're going to enforce the zoning. I'll call the building inspector, who is a zoning enforcement officer, and have him enforce the zoning, and give you a cease and desist. I realize you've got a problem down there.
May I speak?
Yeah.
Okay, so, River Valley Market is, and I'm Tom Bradbury, representing River Valley Market. And we are in the process of looking for more space for our offices, all our administration, human resources, financial and marketing. We actually have a location that's extremely close to Diane's, and if we can't park there, we're not going to bother.
Can't park at the new location?
Can't park. Well, we...
I don't know what "can't park there" means. Does that mean you can't...
Well, you're saying it's a commercial parking lot, so if we, if we rent this other location, which is very close...
Yeah, okay, the new location, the proposed location.
Which is Zapka's property, John Zapka. If we move them over there, we're still going to need to use that additional parking for our staff. We need to bring, we have 96 spaces, and we have 120 employees. In the building, at any one time, we can have 40 employee cars.
To me, you didn't plan, you didn't plan the project very well then, did you?
They did, actually. They planned that project for over 10 years. That spot was, they, they were actually almost forced into that spot.
Why did you only build 90 parking spaces for 120 employees? There's no room for customers then.
Well, we have 120 employees. If we didn't exist, there would not be 120 employees.
Yeah, I know.
Employee.
In my opinion, your lot is being used as a commercial lot, whether you're getting paid for it or not. I think you'd, we, you would find, me, me, this is my opinion, and we're gonna poll the board, that if you move across the street to the Zapka property.
We don't wanna move across the street, we want both, we wanna use both, both locations.
Well, then it's, now you're doubling the, 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 the non-compliance.
Well, that's, that's more on, that's what I'm asking.
What is the, how does the rest of the board feel about it?
This other property, what is, how, what kind of space does it have for parking? Is this the?
Not very much. Zapka's across the street.
Is that a custom kitchen?
Yeah, the kitchen store, yeah.
16 to 20 spaces.
Right.
I guess I would like to add that I think having the additional cars parking there has actually been an improvement, because before, with a big empty lot, what we had is lots of cars, lots of trucks, and even school buses pulling in there really fast, making their big UEs, and pulling out. Now that there's a lot of cars there, people don't do that, and if they do, they come in a lot slower. Mike, you're there all the time.
I'm there 50, 60 hours a week easily as the business owner, and I can absolutely say that that's a fact, that.
We're not arguing that.
We have people coming and flying through there and.
Well, what we're saying is it's a lot safer.
Stop interrupting.
By the time, you know, so this is a car that's zooming around and, and out, and, and gone. I can't even get to the phone, best not to call, to call for backup.
Get a number. That's because the parking lot existed from when it was a restaurant. And they needed that many parking places for their customers.
So the parking lot.
The payment is there.
We know that.
But the zoning doesn't allow it, you see. You're asking me to break the law?
I'm, I'm asking your, your interpretation of the law.
My interpretation of the law is what I said. You are parking at, I don't recall the number.
16 West.
16 West Street. 15 to 20 cars, yet only five or six people work there. The rest of those folks in those cars are getting in a, some sort of shuttle vehicle and going somewhere else. That's a commercial parking lot. Just because you don't exchange money, that's why I say it's a small C commercial. It's not capital C, because there's no capital involved.
So even if there is a benefit to the community, being safer traffic?
Well, that, how can you, no, it's not a benefit to the community.
It's not to have better traffic control? I guess I'm just asking, is there any way that this makes sense? It seems like it benefits everybody, but on paper it says it's not allowed.
It may, it may in fact do that, but the law says you can't do it. It may benefit the community to, to allow everybody to drive 80 miles an hour on 991, because they get through town faster, and they don't leave as much pollution, or they don't throw many coffee cups out the window, because they're doing 80 miles an hour. But it's against the law to do that. I don't know if that's a good analogy or not, but.
In, in your previous hearing, there was a lot of talk about what defined a tower. And that was never decided upon, because there was an argument about what technically was a tower in that, in that situation. And I would contend again that, that commercial means monetary exchange. And there is none here. We're letting them use it out of a courtesy, and there's, there's no profit being made by us for them parking there. It's a huge empty lot, and it's an eyesore to be there.
They get out and put grass in.
But the point is, it is not a commercial lot. That's the point I'm trying to make.
It becomes commercial because you're parking cars from some other area. Especially you cross town lines.
I, I see it as Northampton benefiting, but not Hatfield.
And I see it as a business owner trying to make it.
It's not making anything.
And the town should be supporting business owners, but.
We do. We absolutely do.
But they're not getting any.
We, we are interested in actually moving part of our business into Hatfield. We're actively thinking that.
Come on down.
At this moment. Well, it's not gonna happen.
You're welcome.
Okay.
If this is, if this is your stance.
Do we have a zoning enforcement, the building inspector? Well, the, the thing that, if I may say, the thing that we're caught being a rocky hard place is that our zoning ordinance right now does not allow for commercial parking lots, because we don't want basically prime class one farmland being, you know, put into have another use that's not agricultural and be a commercial parking lot. And there's, there's good reason to not do that. And with all of the auto mall shops on King Street, eventually someone's gonna need parking for their big George Washington day, you know, sales extravagance. And so if the town is allowing for commercial parking spaces, or that is a use that they're willing to open their arms to, you know, you could have these things all over the place. So, but we have a situation here which is, you know, sort of odd. I mean, you have this parking lot, and it's not being used, but how does it, how do we allow you to do what you want to do without setting a precedent and opening it up? Or as Bob said, breaking our own law? Because right now, our zoning ordinance is very clear that we don't allow commercial parking lots.
I got an acre behind my house. Two acres. Five acres. I can turn that into parking?
Yep.
And if you charge people for it, that would.
I'm not charging them.
Then it wouldn't be commercial.
It would be.
That isn't a definition.
I guess that's why.
I came in front of the board a few months, several months ago. And I was told at the, at the board, at the meeting, that all I needed to do was to rent storage space, and I could park there. Or I could rent an office, and I could park as many cars there as I wanted. That's what I was told. I know it's not in the minutes.
I wasn't here.
Well, I know in that conversation, I, I remember that conversation, and the way I remember it, I thought you were actually renting the entire building, that you were actually gonna be renting that building.
And that's what we're looking at across the street, is renting the building.
But I think it was discussed, but it wasn't, it wasn't granted. We didn't make a, we didn't make a statement that said rent the building, and you can park there.
You weren't gonna rent the.
Statement, just go and rent a building, and there won't be any issue. You can park as many cars as you want.
So there isn't enough parking spaces at, cabinets?
No.
I don't know, I don't know how victims lie.
But the, the office spaces will be, will be good for us. And then we'll have the other offices right across the street. We, we would have the location, and it's only a mile from, from the market. A little over a mile.
You know, the other thing too is, is that, you know, I mean, you know, the, you know, RVM is a great business, and they're, they're great for the community at large. I, I hope that we aren't made to look like the bad guys here. I mean, the fact is, is that you obviously didn't plan enough for the parking spaces for your employees at the spot.
And then make your plan.
And then, and then, you know, Big Y or, you know, the other parking spaces down the street said you couldn't be there either, so you're coming to us, and, you know, so it's like, if we say no, it's not like we're, you know, anti-RVM. It's just, you know, there were obviously some mistake, you probably never thought you'd be as popular and as busy as you are. I mean, or you'd have as many employees, because where else would you park those cars? I mean.
We've just surpassed our sixth year. And this fiscal, fiscal year, we closed at 20 million, in, over 20 million in sales. And that's somewhere in, I think, our 16th year projection or something? Is our sixth year.
So, I mean, you've got, you've got an issue. You have an issue that you need to solve, and it's, you know, it's, it's like.
And that's why I'm here.
Yeah, it's like showing up at the mechanic's office and say, a mechanic and saying, I've got a crisis, now it's your problem, you know?
Right.
Well, we're not, we're not trying to make a problem. I mean, the, the parking lots already exist, and, and it's convenient. And we have, we're so busy that we have to actually move the administration staff off as well. We have to actually open up the office space for more managers. And, and we are extremely busy. I mean, the, I think the, the local purchases alone, like, was some crazy.
I think it's a great thing. I'd like to. Rising tide floats all ships. The problem is, you can't park your cars in Hatfield and go work somewhere else.
You can do it once, but you can't keep doing it. It's not a collection point. It's not a parking lot.
Because it doesn't allow commercial parking, whether you're getting compensated or not. You must be nice people to do that out of the kindness of your heart, fill that parking lot with cars.
And we can blame Northampton, that doesn't do any good.
Yeah, they didn't have the foresight to say where, where else, because you're all hemmed in by that quarry, you can't go anywhere else.
Unless you start blasting, then you're gonna start building again.
Well, the land is all conservation land that surrounds.
I don't, I know.
And that quarry.
That's the other thing that hems you in.
They, they were pushed out of their other spots on King Street.
No, no, I know you're gonna, I know you're hemmed in.
So the quarry became something, you know, that Northampton actually came up with. And then they got some grants to actually develop it, because they wanted that piece developed.
Okay.
We don't have any enforcement authority. But in my opinion, 16 West Street is being used as a commercial parking lot. And it's not allowed by zoning. The building inspector is a zoning enforcement officer. And if, if the board agrees on it, I guess.
I agree.
We, we, we need to inform him to enforce the zoning bylaw. We've, we're in a flux now, because we changed building inspectors. The old building inspector was aware of it, and he, he would have enforced it anyway. But he's retired now. He retired July 1st, and there's a fellow there that's not aware of it.
Bob, what is the, the allow or the required parking spaces are, is on a square footage basis, right?
The building code says how many people can be in the building.
Right.
And I don't have it in front of me, so I don't have it off the top of my head.
This is what it says regarding parking space requirements. Professional offices, which I presume that is, it's not a retail sales. Professional offices and office buildings, including sales space, shall have one space for each 250 feet of gross floor area. So if you have an 1,100-foot space, that's a.
Six.
Well, four.
Four, yeah, four and a half.
Four and a half, see, okay, five.
Five.
So you have five cars allowed. That's what, what.
Yeah, assuming one person per car, and, and then the downstairs, I'm not sure what the square footage is down there, but.
Is that a minimum, or is that a maximum? Is that the minimum requirement?
Max, maximum.
Maximum.
Now, if you had a retail space, just for example, restaurant, okay, I'll go, a restaurant. One space for each 50 square feet. Manufacturing, retail sales of furniture, automobiles, and that doesn't apply. I thought there was another thing in here for, like, a retail store. So we went over this with the. Oh, other buildings for retail sales and service shall have one space for each 300 feet of square feet gross floor area. Because a gentleman came regarding that other market. And he needs, I think he has, he has 1,800 square feet of retail sales, so he has, they have six, six spaces for that, and then he needed, I don't know, nine or 10 more spaces, because he wanted to put some apartments in there. But he was figuring out how much space he needed. So I would say this, a professional office, if it's 1,100 square feet, so you get roughly five, five spaces, 250 square feet per.
That's the upstairs that River Valley is leasing. I don't know what the downstairs is. In summation, the planning board feels that you are in violation of the zoning bylaws. We can't slap your wrist, we can just tell you you are, we're informing you of that. Thank you very much. Here, here's a copy of your letter. I, we have someone in the file, but I couldn't.
So where does it go from?
Well, the, the zoning enforcement officer may send you a letter. Because we, we don't have any enforcement authority. We interpret the bylaws.
We just interpret the bylaw.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Bill Mazick.
Is everybody sufficiently worn down yet?
Almost.
No.
We're gonna be done, after you, we're gonna be worn down.
Be good to us, no.
You wanted to know about open space development?
Yeah, that's originally three months ago when I came here.
Okay.
We talked about open space. We put it off until you came back from your vacation. All you wanted to do was talk about more frontage. Well, option one is out, because I can't get more frontage. The only other thing is the sub-development, and I gave you copies. That won't work either, because when you say enforcing the law, it clearly states in the subdivision law.
Gotta have a road. Yeah, but if you look in this, in section 6.20, open space development, an open space development shall mean a residential development in which the single-family residences are clustered together, adjacent to permanently preserve open space. So it's like a subdivision, but you're allowed to have less frontage. You still need the area of the lots.
Right.
But you're allowed to have less frontage. There's a chart in here.
Right.
Where you can, minimum frontage for individual lots in open space development is 80 feet. But you gotta give us a plan to approve, Bill. We can't approve an idea. It's still like a subdivision. You could put a road in and out, and have 80-foot lots around that road, as long as you've got the area behind it. And there's other calculations in here, because wetlands are not used in the area calculations, and, and topography comes into play there. So you need to hire somebody that can lay it out for you.
Well, this, this is, this is what we, you missed the first meeting. This is what we're talking about.
Okay.
We asked you to bring a plan back.
I've got 40 acres there.
Yeah, we know that.
I'm interested in getting a building lot out of it.
You understand that.
And I don't wanna go through the process of subdividing the whole land.
But there's no way to do it. If you don't have 400 feet of frontage on the road, you can't make two lots. You can make lots internally if you bring a road in, and you can, you can use the open space development and use 80-foot frontage, which cuts down the length of the road and clusters the, the houses together.
Well, open space development, okay, I gave you guys the papers, I thought you'd read it over, but I don't see any place where it says you gotta have a city road, town road, or anything else. It's, purpose of open space development. Well, first of all, open space development in my area is development, is allowed by right. That means where I am with the land and stuff, I have a right to the open land development. I mean, 6.20, open space development, 6.21, open space development, allowed by right. Okay, that's number one.
You're right.
Then we get to 6.22, the purpose of open space development, to allow for greater flexibility and creativity in design of residential subdivision, provide for the overall, provided that the overall density of the development is not greater than what is normally allowed in that district. I don't worry about that, because I figured the maximum lots I would be looking at would be six. The smallest lot would be three acres, which would be almost triple what is required.
You can do that, you can make them bigger. You can't make them smaller, you can make them bigger. Okay, let's skip ahead, Bill. I'm gonna save a, save a, skip ahead to 6.2.52, paragraph two.
6. what?
6.2.5, it's at the bottom of the page.
6.25, yeah.
And it goes over to paragraph two on the next page.
6.25?
6.2.5, paragraph two. Let me read it. Provided that all other requirements of this bylaw are met, there shall be no frontage required for individual lots within an open space development, with the exception described in 6.2.5.3 below. Each lot shall have adequate access on a public way. That's the sentence that says a town road. Each lot shall have adequate access on a public way. Whether it's an existing town road, or one that you built, Mazick Circle or Mazick Way, you build a road to town specifications, now you've got lots on them.
Well, I think you're misinterpreting it.
No, I don't.
Because, well, that's your interpretation. It says adequate access on a public way, okay? Once it's, it's a legal town road, you need 200 feet.
No, not in an open space development. If you do it as open space, you can do 80-foot frontage, because there's a, there's a chart in here.
Right.
That says minimum lot. Uh, where are we here? Minimum frontage standard subdivision, standard subdivision.
Get that page with the, that chart?
Yeah, I got it.
You got the chart? Okay.
No, I got it, I got it.
For individual lots.
It says 80, 80 feet, and if you go back in here, it says.
Minimum frontage standard subdivision is, in, you're an outlying residential, 200 feet. Then you go down, the next thing, minimum frontage for individual lots in an open space development, 80 feet. So you can do 80-foot frontage on your street, Mazick Way or Mazick Circle, whatever it's gonna be called, in your subdivision, in your open space development subdivision.
And if you want that subdivision to only be two lots or three lots, that's a decision for you to make.
That's great, you can have 20 acres.
I mean, we're, we're telling you that you can, you could do an open space development out in your property off of Old Stage Road. You just have to bring a plan in, so we can take a look at what you've got in mind. You just have to bring a plan in so we can take a look at what you've got in mind.
Okay, I guess, I've got no problem with that, bringing a plan in. My plan is, my problem is the existing way there, public way. You're gonna make me spend a quarter of a million dollars to build a city road.
What public way, what, Old Stage Road?
He's talking about his driveway.
I got my way up there. Okay, it's 20 feet wide, blah, 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 all this other bullshit.
It's a driveway.
Right now, it takes care of four people up there, okay? Each and every year, we pay in excess of $15,000 to this city.
Nothing to do with it.
It does, it has a lot to do with it.
It doesn't with our decision.
Well, it should.
We don't make a decision based on tax dollars, we make a decision on highest and best use.
Okay, no, but you're telling me I'm gonna have to do a road in there that's equal to the town road. I'll make it equal to Old Stage Road, from where the tar start, to, tar stops and going up. It goes up a half mile from my house. You get up there a quarter of the way and it narrows down to where it's less than one lane wide. And there ain't no turnaround or hammerheads or anything else up there. Last month, the town was up there doing work, I wanted to see what they were doing. I drove up there. The guy was coming down with a bucket loader. You know what happened? I had to back 400 feet down the road. Back down the road, back down a town road. You know, you people talk about rules and regulations and stuff, and you don't even, the town doesn't even follow them.
No, they don't have the money.
Oh, I don't have the money to build a town road for you either.
Well, then you can't.
So I get exemption because, I mean, there's four houses up there, I wish I owned one of them and started on fire. Because you can't even get a goddamn fire truck up that road, and if you got one up the road, you wouldn't be able to turn it around. But yet it's a town road and you allow building up there. And I got a road that is twice as wide as that road up there. And you're telling me it ain't good enough?
I don't know.
We didn't say...
I haven't seen it on paper. You gotta put it on paper.
It's all the time, you gotta put it on paper.
It might be adequate, put it on paper. You gotta, you gotta give us a plan that we can...
And we gotta know where you want for...
We can't approve an idea.
The main thing, Bob, is what do you want for a road?
It's supposed to meet the town specifications.
Town will give you the quality.
Maybe upstairs or wherever they are, DPW will...
Well, I want to use the same specs that you got for Stage Road.
That?
You know?
That's up to DPW.
Department of Public Works, not the planning board.
Planning board doesn't...
And afterwards, I mean, I've taken care of that road for 12 years.
That's fine, I don't think we need to hear that.
So now, once it's accepted by you...
That's not germane to this particular...
Yes, it is, because once it, once it becomes a public road, the city's gonna be responsible for taking care of it, maintaining it, plowing it, sanding it, everything else.
When it's accepted, that's right.
Yeah.
That's right, just like, out off of, where are you?
Woodbridge, Scotland.
Woodbridge Circle, there's Nolan Circle.
Or Nolan Circle.
Those are town roads now. The guy, the developer built the road, built it to town specifications, paved it, and then, and the town accepted it, now there's building lots on there.
On the town floor.
Okay.
Bring us a plan done by an engineer, showing us what you're gonna do. If it's within the design standards, no problem. No problem, we'll sign off on it. But we can't sign off on an idea.
Okay.
You might be, you might, maybe what you've got there is adequate, but you gotta get somebody to put it on paper.
Well, I'm just saying, I read your specifications for a legal town road. And I mean, that road is 20 feet wide and blah, blah, blah. For a legal town road, it's gotta be, I think it's 30 feet now, you gotta have 20 feet on each side. And this, that, and everything else. And there's no way that I'm gonna spend a quarter of a million dollars. I mean, it's gonna be cheaper for me to go to court and take, fight it in court.
Okay, that's your privilege. No problem. That's your privilege.
Okay.
It's your constitutional right, Bill. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, let me see if I can find my agenda.
Next thing, right here, oh, God.
Lee Sperry?
Lee Sperry.
Right here.
Come up here and tell us what you're gonna do.
I have your copies clustered up. I live on Prospect Street. I also own a very small house. I don't even know if you could call it a house, it's more like a cottage, right behind my loft, because I'm raining down. With my daughter-in-law, my ex-daughter-in-law, and two grandchildren are living. And I told her that if I could, I would try to give her a breakfast note coming out so she could put a table there and she'd still have room for a computer in the kitchen. So small. That's the one you asked about, so it just proves that I own there, John Rock, I could claim the... I had a sketch, it's pre-existing non-conforming. I tried to find, me and my helper here, tried to find a pin all day, we got a metal detector and everything broke. Anyway, success that I have on this map from the registry of deeds, it does have the pins down there, it does have the GPS.
It also indicates a pin right here.
Right on the road, that's what I got.
Has this pin here?
Yeah, it has a GPS, GPS on it, yes, that's the one that shows that my house is not shown on here, that's why I did it.
Oh, it's this pin, then? It's the, the direction is 75...
I don't know why there's two pins here. What happened was, when we, when I first moved in, there'd been a land dispute between the lady up the street's grandfather and the grandfather, the guy who'd been on, I don't know, for 80 years or so. So she was claiming that my building was on her property. I said, "Look, why don't I just give you some money and we'll draw a new line, and then we can get rid of all that." So this was drawn, this was drawn after, this is, this is '03, maybe it was December of '02 when we settled it. But by finding that pin, I have the, I have the GPS coordinates on that one. Now, since this...
No, that's the direction of the property line, it's not GPS coordinates.
This here?
It's the direction of the property line.
Okay. But it was, it was done along her, done along her mulch, she's got Arbivite along here. We use the mulch line. But since this happened, they've redone the road here. She claims that we own right to the pavement because they widened the road recently and they moved, they came this way, this side of the street, not that side of the street. So that's what happened, and also, a electrical line underground was placed to feed this house. So two things, I don't know, that's, I'm just guessing.
So you, you're guessing and saying that the house is 25 feet...
Yeah.
To the pavement.
The pavement, which it looks like...
But you don't know that that's the property line or not.
I don't know for sure the pin is on the pavement, but I'm, it looks like it is from here, that's...
Did you find a pin with a metal detector?
No, we tried, we tried to, trying to find it, but it kept beeping.
That was a magnet?
No, it's a good metal there, but it would tell us it was there and we'd find a stone or something. Very frustrating, dug up.
It doesn't like metal, maybe?
I don't know, the only reason I could think of, if it got moved, because road construction was done, and also it was an underground cable.
Could've gotten dug up, yeah.
I don't know, I don't think it could've.
The one that laid the cable there, have them lay it out where it is, mark it out?
I don't know, I...
What is it, telephone or?
Electrical, it comes from...
Thinks it's electric.
Yeah, I had a...
So it could be less than 25 feet.
It could be.
If, if the pin is in four feet or so there.
I know it's, I remember, it can't be more than two or three feet from the road, because I, I remember, I was there when he nailed it in, but I don't remember, you know, I know he was real close to the road, but I just don't know, you know?
Well...
Okay, what were you looking for on this question?
Is this a, isn't this a variance issue?
Yeah, it would be more variance. When you talked to me downstairs weeks ago, I wasn't aware, it wasn't clear to me what you were doing here. You're making this, you can't make it any closer to the property line, to the front property line. You can go for a variance, you can ask for a variance. I thought you were going this way, because the whole thing is pre-existing non-conforming, because you're...
That's why you told me.
The lot isn't big enough, you're too close to the line over here.
I wondered why you said that lot disappeared, that lot disappeared when you found out that I owned it.
You go over the bank?
This would be a variance situation.
It's just four feet out, and I wanna go another, I need to go out five...
Another five feet.
Yeah.
This would be a variance situation. In order to get a variance, you have to apply for a building permit.
Okay.
Then the building inspector rejects it, says you can't do it because you're too close to the line. Then you go to the ZBA, and you ask them to approve it. If they approve it, then the building inspector will give you a building permit.
So I haven't got much chance to do it, is this signed?
I don't know, I can't, I can't answer for the ZBA.
So I have to go to the ZBA first?
First, you gotta get a rejection from the building inspector. You gotta see him, and he will say, reject it, too close to the front property line.
And you go to them.
Then you go to the ZBA. Okay?
All righty. You want, you keeping those?
You can keep it, you can take everyone back.
We only need one.
You're gonna need them.
Yeah, I think I am.
They'll...
Yep.
And they'll, they'll, the typical procedure is, is that they notify the neighbors, right? Because the neighbors have an opportunity to...
I don't know if they do for variances.
Okay.
If they notify the neighbors.
They don't have to.
I don't think they do.
That was yours, right?
You can have, you can have it back, I don't need it. I don't want you to have to go through any more paperwork.
Hatfield Village.
After tonight, I can still write. All righty, man.
Okay, thank you.
ZBA?
No, building inspector first.
Building inspector first, okay.
And then the ZBA.
Yeah, thank you.
Come on. Steve Lozzy.
Go out, chair up and sit down, enjoy your life.
Let me get the, the, I met with somebody at the town clerk's office, and they, they were gonna, they're gonna file to eliminate the sidewalk at Hatfield Village. And they felt that she didn't need to submit everything, which is, which is more than likely true, because we don't need all, all of this stuff. And so I, I informed her that she needed to submit the request in writing, and then we would approve it or amend it or whatever needed to be done. For the, I think, I think, we need to amend the special permit or the site plan review approval in order to eliminate that sidewalk, because the plans we signed had a sidewalk And the requirements, again, the existing or proposed topography, that's all done under item 5. Item 6, the existing structures, those are, they're all in, we know where they are. There's the septic systems, storm drainage, that's all in, there's no septic system anyway. But the calculations, that was all taken care of in the initial approval. All these things were, were taken care of in, for the initial approval, they're really just coming back to amend the sidewalk part of the proposal.
Why is the sidewalk going away?
So...
They don't want it. They don't want it. I'm not sure that, that...
So the number 11, proposed landscape features, I guess, is that a landscape?
Well, yeah, I guess if you're gonna do more landscaping, you mentioned you were gonna do more landscaping in lieu of the sidewalk, so...
Well, not yet, that's not yet, that's not written or anything in stone, it's just something that had been discussed. At this point, we're just looking to remove the sidewalk.
Again, I'm, I'm not too hip on taking the sidewalk out of there. As a matter of fact, I drove through there tonight on my way here. There were people walking in the road, and when I came around the corner, they were standing in the road, and I had to go out and around them. Isn't that the purpose of a sidewalk, to get people out of the road?
I'm not here for the sidewalk.
Okay.
This, this stuff that's here...
So you're not gonna, you're not gonna propose any additional landscaping then?
Not at this point. I mean, all I'm here for tonight is just the exceptions right here, which I believe is stuff you people already have. So we just want to make sure this is fine before we submit the actual permit.
Well, I would make a motion that we approve this, approve this request for a waiver under section 5.33. The items listed here, 4, 5, 6, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, and we approve the waiver.
Oh, and a waiver with regards...
For the submittal, for the...
Yeah, right.
The proposed sidewalk eliminations. Because we already have all this information. It's really just the, the plan that shows the sidewalk would not show a sidewalk.
Right.
So...
One question, as far as the plan that doesn't show the sidewalk, is there a specific size plan you request or need or what?
The same you gave us originally.
Okay.
Because then it'll get attached to those sets that are on file here in, in the building inspector's office. So that same plan...
Minus, the same size plan, just minus the size.
Yeah, the computer can take the sidewalk off.
Okay.
So I made a motion.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. You got your waiver.
Good night, gentlemen.
Thank you. I read the minutes, I don't know if everybody else read them.
Mm-hmm. Move the problem.
Any discussion, amendments? Favor?
Aye.
Amendment, the minutes of...
June 4th.
June 4th are approved. The other thing I worked on was this, a flow chart for permit, expediting permits under chapter 43D. I got this template from Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. We can talk about this next time. I'll give you all a copy, you can look it over, and we'll put it on the agenda for next time.
Thank you.
Again, it's a flow chart that Pioneer Valley Planning Commission developed for everybody to use. Any business?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
I wish that you guys would add one more when you make out, when you distribute when you...
I'm sorry.
Because I'm always chasing around...
I'm sorry.
No, I, I, that's not your fault, I just would be helpful.
Okay, well, now I will.
All right, the second thing I want you all to know, is I just started my eighth year.
Very good.
Today.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
We're putting for a raise.
Thanks, man.
As far as it'll go.
As far as it'll go.
Yes, I have a, I'll, I'll make copies if you want, so you can have copies.
I don't want to... I sat there to give the town clerk what it was.
This is part of the public record.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
No, this isn't the petition, this is the...
No, that's the, the tenancy.
Yeah.
I want to look at it.
It goes with her.
Know a few people.
I will, should I write a note on this to have? Oh, thank you.
Did that verify?
Public domain.
You should. Yeah, I do.